Now see the next question sir, question number twenty-nine. Very, very beautiful question but it can be solved very easily if you have understood the previous questions. Now see here, A is given as square root of square root of three plus two root two divided by three minus two root two. You are actually asked to find A power eight plus one by A power eight. Now, if I do it in the regular way, if I do it in the regular way, not the shortcut method probably. See here, there are two square roots in this question. Students looking at this question itself will think that it is a very difficult question because there are multiple square roots given in the question. But it is not difficult if you actually understand the root cause of the problem. Now see here sir, first of all, there is an outer square root. Let me mark that particular square root in red color, right? This is the red color square root what I have. If I want to remove that red color square root, I should square both sides. That means if I square both sides, left hand side it becomes A power two or in other words A square. Right hand side this red color square root will be removed, I am not writing it. I am sure that you should also not write it in the examination hall and waste your time. Now, I have left hand side as A square. I right hand side I only have one square root right now, this outer red color square root will be removed. Now, I have one more square root, let me mark that particular square root as green color, right? I will mark it as in green color. Now, I have left hand side right now as A power two, but I right hand side I also have one more square root. If I want to remove that green color square root also, then I should square both sides once again. Left hand side is A power two and when I square it, I will get it as A power four. Right hand side, the red color square root is already removed long back. The green color square root will be removed right now. That means you will be left only with three plus two root two divided by three minus two root two. I hope you are understanding the logic sir, right? Within a second or within probably two to three seconds, you should write this particular equation in your examination without having writing A square and A power four two times, right? Now, if I further rationalize it, multiply the numerator and denominator by three plus two root two. So numerator becomes three plus two root two into three plus two root two. It is three plus two root two whole square. Denominator is three minus two root two into three plus two root two. It is nine minus eight which is one. If I again further simplify, this will be three square nine. Two root two whole square is eight. Nine plus eight is seventeen plus two A B, two into three into two root two. It is nothing but twelve root two, right? It is nothing but twelve root two. Now, we finally arrived at a conclusion as of now saying that A power four is seventeen plus twelve root two. Now, think little logically sir, what is that they are asking you in the question? They are asking you A power eight plus one by A power eight. Now, if I know the value of, if I know the value of A power four plus one by A power four as K. If I know A power four plus one by A power four as K, then it is very easy for me to say that A power eight. A power eight plus one by A power eight, this will be equal to K square minus two, right? This will be equal to K square minus two. Sorry, K square minus two sir, not K square minus eight here. This will be equal to K square minus two. That means can I say that I need to get A power four plus one by A power four value, right? I definitely have to get A power four plus one by A power four value. If I get that A power four plus one by A power four value, A power eight plus one by A power eight is not at all a difficult task for me. But as of now, what I have is, I do not have A power four plus one by A power four. I only have A power four value. Now, how will I find one by A power four? I should reciprocate A power four and then I should add it. Instead of doing all these extra additional steps which is not required. In the beginning of my algebra class, I taught you one beautiful corollary saying that if X is equal to square root of A plus square root of B. Don't get confused with this particular A and this particular A, I am just writing the corollary. And square root of A square, square root of B square, if the difference is equal to one, then I can directly write X plus one by X value as two into square root of A. Where square root of A is bigger number compared to square root of B. Now, same logic here also, in place of X, you have A power four. That means in place of X, it is A power four. So here also it becomes A power four plus one by A power four is equal to two into square root of A. But this two into square root of A is valid only if the difference between root A whole square and root B whole square is one. Check it out, A power four value is seventeen plus twelve root two. This seventeen is nothing but root A, twelve root two is nothing but root B. Root A whole square is seventeen square two eighty-nine. Minus root B whole square is twelve root two whole square, this will be one forty-four into two, two eighty-eight. Because the difference is becoming equal to one, I can say that X plus one by X is equal to two times of root A. Or A power four plus one by A power four is equal to two times of, the bigger value is seventeen. So we know the value of A power four plus one by A power four in this question as seventeen. And we also know that, sorry, not seventeen sir, it is two times of seventeen, thirty-four. Whenever A power four plus one by A power four value is known to us as thirty-four, it is very simpler. We have solved so many questions in my previous problems. Power is four here, four is becoming eight, it is becoming two times. Whenever the power is doubled, whenever the power is doubled, the value will be equal to K square minus two. So answer for this question is thirty-four square minus two, one-one-five-six minus two. Answer finally for this question is one-one-five-four. I hope the idea is very, very clear for you people. But having said that, whatever I have solved, it is beautiful but unfortunately not the best method. Because so many things we need to calculate here and then finally arrive at the conclusion. Now, instead of doing all these things and wasting our time, we have discussed some beautiful things in our previous problems. In the beginning of algebra topic, we have discussed these things. Now, what is that we have discussed? X plus one by X, if it is equal to K, then X square plus one by X square will be, it is K square minus two. Now, if you observe carefully, can I say that the power here is one? This one is becoming two, right? One is becoming two, that means the power is getting doubled. Answer will be of the form K square minus two, right? It will be of the form K square minus two. Similarly, suppose if X square plus one by X square, if it is equal to K, then X power four plus one by X power four. This will also be of the form K square minus two. Power is two here, two is becoming four, power is getting doubled. Suppose if it is, four is becoming eight, again the power is getting doubled. That means if X power four plus one by X power four, if it is equal to some constant K, then X power eight plus one by X power eight will be again of the form K square minus two. That means in simple language, whenever the powers are getting doubled, whenever the powers are getting doubled or whenever the powers are something like two power K, right? One is nothing but two power zero, two is nothing but two power one, four is nothing but two power two, eight is nothing but two power three. Next it is X power sixteen plus one by X power sixteen, that also will definitely be, definitely be of the form K square minus two. X power thirty-two plus one by X power thirty-two, that will also be of the form K square minus two. That means question directly says that, what is the question they are asking? What is A power eight plus one by A power eight? This power eight is nothing but two power something, it is two power three. So you can directly say from method two that answer should definitely be of the form K square minus two. The only one option which is satisfying, which is of the form K square minus two is, it is one-one-five-four. One-one-five-six is exactly perfect square, one-one-five-two is K square minus four, one-one-five-eight is K square plus two. But we are interested in K square minus two. Answer for this question is one-one-five-four. You might get a doubt, what if there is another option which is having K square minus two format? That is the reason I have taught you method one also. If there are more than one option satisfying, then switch on to method one. Very, very simple way of understanding. I hope you are understanding how to tackle these questions. Just do not jump to a conclusion always to solve by using method one, yes. Method one is good, I am not saying that method one is not good. But at the same time, time consuming is one of the very, very crucial thing in your examination. If you are consuming a lot of time, then you are gone. It's very simple, I am very blunt in saying that statement. If you consume too much of time, you cannot crack the exam. You should have that skill, skill set of saving time in every problem so that that saved time can be utilized for some other difficult questions. How are you saving time in this question? I am least bothered about finding A power four and I am least bothered about finding A power four plus one by A power four and then converting it to A power eight plus one by eight, A power eight. I am very sure that A power eight plus one by A power eight will definitely be of the form K square minus two. Go with answer options, mark it. If there are multiple options, switch on to method one. I hope the idea is very clear for you people sir. Question number thirty, question number thirty, very, very good question but we have solved multiple questions of this sort already. But let us see again how to solve it. Question number thirty, M is given as root five minus root three divided by root five plus root three. If you observe N value, it is exactly the reverse, reverse of M, right? Reverse of M. So immediately you should understand that product of M and N is equal to one or in other language, N is nothing but the reciprocal of M. So this should strike you immediately. And the second thing is, we also know that the sum of a number and its reciprocal or a variable and its reciprocal, M plus N where N is nothing but one by M. The sum of variable and its reciprocal is two times of, two times of, forget about the square root. Write down five one three as it is. Denominator also forget about the square roots, write down five one three as it is. Numerator should be plus, denominator should be minus. We have solved several problems of this sort already. So M plus one by M will be equal to five into, five minus three is two, this two will cancel with numerator two. Five plus three is eight. That means because the product of M and N is equal to one, we came to a conclusion that M plus N in this question is eight. Or in other words, M plus one by M is equal to eight. Now, it's very simple from here onward sir. What is that we are interested in finding? They are asking you to find this value, let us find it. So first thing is, it is M square, I will write it as it is. Plus, last term is N square. N square can be written as one by M square. Plus, middle term is MN, MN value we know it as one, write down one. Denominator is M square plus, last term is N square. N square is nothing but one by M square. Middle term is minus MN which is minus one. We know the value of M square plus, sorry, we know the value of M plus one by N, one, M by, one by M, sorry. M plus one by M is known as eight. M square plus one by M square is very simply, easily can be written as eight square minus two. That means it is sixty-four minus two, sixty-two. So numerator is sixty-two plus one, denominator is sixty-two minus one. Answer for this question is sixty-three divided by sixty-one which is nothing but option A, right? Which is nothing but option A. But having said that, once again I am saying it to you people, you are actually killing a lot of time if you are applying this particular method. Sir, what is method two then? Method two is also similar to this one only sir, but only thing is, you actually don't need to waste your time in finding this M plus one by M value. And then later finding M square plus one by M square value, these are all wastage of time. It's very simple, what is the question? Question is this one and we have reduced that to this particular format. M square plus one by M square plus one, M square plus one by M square minus one. That means we definitely know that M square plus one by M square will be of the form K square minus two. And then there is something called as plus one in the question itself. I will write down that plus one as it is. That means my numerator should be of the form K square minus one. My numerator should be of the form perfect square minus one. If you observe the answer options, there is only one option where the numerator is of the form perfect square minus one. That is nothing but first option where the numerator is sixty-three. Second option sixty-seven is, it is sixty-four plus three, not possible. Sixty-four plus one, not possible. Sixty-four plus five, not possible. You are done with the answer already. You actually don't need to find M plus one by M. You actually don't even need to find M square plus one by M square value also and substitute and simplify like the way you did it in method one. That is the reason I am repeatedly saying you, switch on to beautiful method of method two because we always know that M square plus one by M square will definitely be of the form K square minus two. Not only M square plus one by M square value, M power four plus one by M power four also will be K square minus two. M power eight plus one by M power eight also will be of the form K square minus two. And we know that property so it becomes very easy to solve it by using this particular method of method two. Now, you might get a doubt, sir, you only did with numerator. What if denominator also needs to be taken care of? Yes sir, you can do it. See here, denominator is M square plus one by M square, that is of the form K square minus two and minus one is there in the question itself. So numerator should be of the form K square minus one, denominator should be of the form K square minus three. If you observe, numerator is K square minus one, denominator sixty-one is nothing but K square minus three. And this is the only option which is satisfying both the conditions. Sixty-five is K square plus one, not K square minus three. Sixty-three is not K square minus three. Sixty-seven is also not K square minus three. You are left with only one option which is satisfying the condition. What if another option is there, I have told you multiple times, switch on to method one in this case. I hope the idea is very clear sir and I am telling you people, this kind of questions is one of the favorite questions of SSC CGL examination papers. And this kind of questions can be solved so fast, at least having listened to the first thirty question till now. Very good question, question number thirty-one. Listen carefully sir, question number thirty-one. Now, directly looking into the question, what should strike you is, they are giving that Q is nothing but reciprocal of P. That means product of Q and P is equal to one. That means can I say that this PQ value is one, right? PQ value is one. Now, because the product of P and Q is one, I can also say that, I can also say that this I can reduce it like this. This I can reduce it as, first term is three P square, last term is three Q square. If I take three common factor, it becomes P square plus Q square. But Q square is one by P square. That means what I am actually finding in this question is, P square plus one by P square minus five into one. This is what they are asking you in the question. Sir, should I definitely solve method one for you people? I don't think so that I should solve method one. But anyway, if you observe carefully, if you observe carefully, P square plus one by P square should be of the form, it is K square minus two, right? It should be of the form K square minus two. Anyway, let me find it out sir, let me find it out for you people. First of all, for me to get the value of P square plus one by P square, I need to find P plus one by P value. I only have P value. One by P means I should take the reciprocal and add it. Instead of that, we know a shortcut, it is two times of, remove the square roots, write down just as thirteen and eleven. Write it just as thirteen and eleven in both numerator and denominator. In the numerator, add them in the denominator, subtract them. Thirteen minus eleven is two, cancel with this two. Thirteen plus eleven is twenty-four. That means we know that P plus one by P is twenty-four. So this particular entire expression can be now written as, it is three times of, because P plus one by P is twenty-four. P square plus one by P square is twenty-four square minus two, right? Twenty-four square minus two and minus five, I will write it as it is. Now, if you further simplify, if you further simplify, twenty-four square is five seventy-six, minus two is five seventy-four. So this will become three times of five seventy-four minus five, three times of five seventy-four minus five. I don't want you people to waste your time in simplifying three times of five seventy-four and then subtracting it from five. Very simple sir, work with the unit digit. This is nothing but three into four, it is twelve. That means the unit digit of this particular number will end with two, minus five. Whenever a number ending with two is subtracted from five, the unit digit in the answer should be seven. That means third option one-seven-seven-one can definitely not be the right answer. Fourth option double-one-seven-one can also not be the right answer. Either first option should be correct or second option should be correct. Now, why first and second option should be correct? Both of them are ending with seven. Now, how to identify which is the right answer? Again, a small, small thinking will make you very, very easy in solving the examination questions. Assume this as five hundred, forget about five seventy-four. Assume this as five hundred, three into five hundred is fifteen hundred. Fifteen hundred minus five is one-four-nine-five. That means definitely answer should be greater than fourteen hundred. Second option is double-one-double-seven, it is not even greater than twelve hundred. How can that be the right answer? Answer should be one-seven-seven-seven, very simple sir. This is some of the common sense, this is the common sense what you need to apply in the examination to get the answer faster, simple. Now see here sir, again and again and again I am repeating this particular statement which is not a new thing what we are learning right now. But because you might get little confused in the next question, seeing the numerical values, I am telling it once again. Now, can I say that if at all, A plus one by A is equal to K? If A plus one by A is equal to K, then I can conclude that A square plus one by A square will be equal to how much? K square minus two. That means can I say like this sir? Can I say that whatever I have here, if the same thing is there in the denominator also, that means if it is the reciprocal and if it is added, which is giving you some constant K. And if it is A square and its reciprocal, one by A square added, then it will be K square minus two. See the next question sir, looking into the question, you might think that it's a very, very tricky question. But the most easiest question is nothing but this question. Now see here, now observe carefully sir, what is that they are giving you? A power five by six plus one by A power five by six plus four is equal to zero. Then, A power five by six plus four whole square plus one by A power five by six plus four whole square is how much? This is what they are asking you in the question. Now, first thing is, a very, very simple analogy, very simple analogy says that this I can consider whatever is inside the bracket as X. This also will be the same X. That means the question says, what is X square plus one by X square, right? X square plus one by X square is what they are asking. Now, if at all I want to find X square plus one by X square, I should know X plus one by X value. If I know X plus one by X value, X square plus one by X square is just K square minus two format, right? It is not at all a difficult task. That means if I know, if I know A power five by six plus four, if I know A power five by six plus four plus one by A power five by six plus four value. If I know this particular value, then finding this particular question is not at all a difficult task. But in the question, if you observe properly, they are asking you, they are giving you A power five by six. Yes, beautiful, this term is given, but this four is not added in the question, this four is not added. Similarly, denominator, this entire term is exactly the same what is given in the question also. That means only missing term according to our requirement is, on the left hand side I should add four. Just add it now, why are you worrying? Because my requirement should match like this, on the left hand side I will add four. I will also add four on the right hand side also, zero plus four is four. That means now my question is exactly similar to this where K value in my question is given as zero plus four which is equal to four. Now, because I know this particular value, I can easily find the square of those things, sum of squares of those things with their reciprocation, reciprocates. That means answer will be K square minus two. It is four square minus two. Answer is sixteen minus two, answer for this question should be fourteen. I hope it is very clear sir. Do not get disturbed or do not have that fear just looking into some beautiful numbers which they given the question as five by six in the power all those things. Don't get carried away by those kind of numbers what they gave. Just try to analyze in the same way what we have did in the past. It's a very easy question. Now, instead of doing all these things, you already know that method two is even more simpler compared to method one because it is just one second answer that will give you. That means question is of the form, whatever the question which they are asking, it is of the form X square plus one by X square. So answer should be of the form K square minus two. There is only one option which is of the form K square minus two and that is nothing but fourteen. Ten is nothing but nine plus one, K square plus one. Thirteen is nothing but nine plus four, K square plus four. Or it is sixteen minus three, K square minus three. Twelve is nothing but K square plus three, nine plus three. Or it is nothing but sixteen minus four. The only option which is satisfying is fourteen. You don't even have to struggle doing all these extra intermediate steps and get confused. But anyway, having said that, it is always advisable to know the method one also if in case the method two will not strike it to you in the examination. I hope this question is very clear sir. Now see here, next varieties of questions. But this variety, whatever I am solving right now, it will automatically be reduced to the variety what we have discussed already till now. But having said that, let me teach you what I am telling you right now in, in this particular screen. Now see here, let us understand these key point before moving on to problems. Suppose, we already know that if I know the value of X plus one by X as K. If I know the value of X plus one by X as K. Now, instead of taking it as K, let me take some value for K, let me assume it as ten, right? That means I will not take it as K for my explanation purpose for your better understanding, let me take it as ten. Now, this X plus one by X is equal to ten can also be written after taking the L C M as X L C M, X square plus one is equal to ten. This is another way of writing the above expression. Or this can also be written as X square plus one is equal to ten X. This is also very much true. Or this can also be written as X square minus ten X plus one is equal to zero. That means can I say that this particular thing, whatever I wrote it at the end, whatever I am putting in a box right now, this is nothing but a quadratic equation, right? This is nothing but a quadratic equation because the degree of this equation is two. That means in simple language can I say that any quadratic equation, any quadratic equation can be reduced to this particular form as X plus one by X is equal to ten. Because from X plus one by X equal to ten only we derive this quadratic equation, reverse way also we can travel it. Any quadratic equation can be reduced to the form of X plus one by X is equal to ten. That means suppose for example, observe carefully, let me write the same quadratic equation once again. The quadratic equation what I got is, X square minus ten X plus one is equal to zero. Now, if you observe carefully here, the coefficient of X square is one. Listen to this carefully sir, I will take multiple example before I move on to the questions. The coefficient of X square is one and... here for the constant for the constant I have plus sign if I have plus sign for the constant you should also put the plus sign between X and one by X again I am repeating if the constant is having plus sign you should also put plus sign with between X and one by X similarly if the constant is having minus sign you should also put X minus one by X simple let us come to minus sign later now see here X plus one by X is equal to now whatever the magnitude you have here with sign whatever the value you have along with the sign which is nothing but minus ten shifted to the right side it becomes plus ten that means very easily I can write it see two to three things you should remember here sir first thing is coefficient of X square is one that is the first thing second thing is constant is having plus sign you also put plus sign between X and one by X equals write it third thing is you have minus ten in between shifted to the right hand side it becomes plus ten that means this particular quadratic equation can be reduced to this particular form within seconds within seconds I don't want you to waste your time in the examination hall reducing all those things within seconds you should be able to do it one more example let me take it suppose if my equation is X square minus four X plus one equal to zero tell me sir what should be the value because it is plus here I should also write plus between X and one by X coefficient of X square is one beautiful no problem this minus four shifted to the right hand side it becomes plus four you should not even take this much of time like the way I took it to explain you should immediately within a second write it tell me sir tell me tell me I am more interested in making you people understand and learn now suppose if the equation is X square plus nineteen X plus one is equal to zero very simple it is X plus one by X why it is plus here because the constant is having plus simple this plus nineteen shifted to the right hand side it becomes minus nineteen within seconds I want you people to learn all these things and solve it in the examination hall now one more simple equation I am sure that you are understanding the difference between each and every equation X square minus seven X minus one equal to zero how can I write it sir because it is minus present for constant my value will be X minus one by X and the coefficient of X square is one so no headache for me this minus seven which is there on the left hand side shifted to the right hand side it becomes plus seven very simple why do you want to worry so much suppose one last explanation or one last example in this particular case tell me sir suppose if my equation is X square plus forty three X minus one is equal to zero this can be simplified as X minus one by X is plus forty three on the left hand side becomes minus forty three on the right hand side so it is X minus one by X is minus forty three now this is one of the ways of quadratic equations and that quadratic equation we are reducing either to the form of X plus one by X or X minus one by X this first form of quadratic equation if you observe carefully all these things you will have coefficient of X square as one everywhere the coefficient of X square is one but the next thing what you might get a doubt is what if the coefficient of X square is not equal to one if it is not equal to one make it as one sir why are you bothering too much now see here what am I saying you is suppose if the coefficient of X square is something like six six X square minus thirteen X plus six is equal to zero now this is the quadratic equation where the coefficient of X square is not one but it is other than one in this example it is six now only one question I will show it to you I don't want the coefficient of X square to be six I want the coefficient of X square to be one so may divide by six both sides six X square by six is X square thirteen X by six is thirteen by six X plus six by six is one equal to zero now you already know how to solve this this can be simplified as X plus one by X why am I writing X plus one by X here because the constant is having plus and this minus thirteen by six shifted to the right hand side it becomes plus thirteen by six this is the only difference because six is there as the constant of X square or the coefficient of X square that should come in the denominator that the only thing that you need to implement here sir rest all thing absolutely remains the same let me take few more example for your better understanding I want you people to learn these are all this quadratic equation should be converted to this particular form within seconds in your examination and thereby you can solve the problem very fast I don't want you people to keep on struggling in the examination hall suppose tell me here sir five X square plus nine X plus five equal to zero I will not write all these things in my examination hall and waste my time the constant is having plus so question is X plus one by X very simple the constant the the middle term is plus nine shifted to the right hand side it becomes minus nine but because the coefficient of X square is five shifted to the right hand side it becomes the denominator five simple very simple way of solving tell me sir tell me tell me I am more interested in making you people solve it eight X square when you are seeing this screen you should tell it you should tell it to yourself what will be the value because it is minus eight so it can be reduced to X minus one by X so seventeen shifted to right hand side minus seventeen eight shifted to right hand side divided by eight minus seventeen by eight one last explanation suppose tell me sir I am actually wanted you to tell this nine X square minus twenty five X minus nine is equal to zero tell me tell me tell me so this is X minus one by X format so this will be minus twenty five comes to the right hand side plus twenty five nine comes to the right hand side divided by nine X minus one by X is twenty five by nine this is how fast I want you people this is exactly how fast I want you people to solve this and reduce it the any quadratic equation to either X plus one by X format or X minus one by X format now first of all a very basic doubt you might get is why are you discussing all these things why am I discussing all these things because the next question whatever I am solving will be of the form of quadratic equation but you will think that it's a very difficult question but it is one of the most easiest question that you can get see here sir again I am saying don't just get what do you say like fear just seeing the numbers in the question the question says it is seven P seven power four seven by four sorry seven P power seven by four minus eight into P power seven by eight plus seven is equal to zero in the question they are asking you P power seven by four plus one by P power seven by four value is how much P power seven by four plus one by P power seven by four value is how much now see here sir first important point is I can write I am just showing this for my explanation but you actually don't need to write it this can be written as seven into seven P power seven by eight whole power two right this is nothing but two into seven by eight which is seven by four itself what is given so minus eight into P power seven by eight plus seven is equal to zero now this is a quadratic equation why this is a quadratic equation because if I put seven P power seven by eight as some variable Y for example it is seven Y square minus eight Y plus seven equal to zero so I want to reduce it as Y plus one by Y or seven P power seven by eight plus one by P power seven by eight one by P power seven by eight how much it will become this minus eight will shift to the right hand side it becomes plus eight and this seven which is the coefficient of power two degree two will come to the denominator now I know the value of P power seven by eight but I want to get the value of P power seven by four plus one by P power seven by four it's very simple right sir it is very simple this is something like X plus one by X this is something like X square plus one by X square so answer is K square minus two K square minus two is eight by seven whole square minus two which is sixty four by forty nine by sorry sixty four by forty nine minus two answer for this question is minus thirty four by forty nine which is nothing but option B I hope the idea is clear I hope you are understanding sir this is nothing but Y Y plus one by Y value is K Y square plus one by Y square so Y square is nothing but P power seven by eight whole square which is nothing but P power seven by four itself I hope you are not getting confused right again and again I am saying just because they give some awkward powers in the in the question does not mean that it's a difficult question just looking into the question don't have that fear oh my god what is this here so much of complexity is there in this question it is not a complex thing you should know how to make it as the simple thing that's the thing which is lacking in you right now probably and probably work on it more and you will definitely make sure that in the examination hall you will be the most fastest person to solve these varieties of problem in the most easiest way possible next question before solving the next question again I want to teach you few more extra things before moving on to easy sorry moving on to problem solving now see here sir we already know that if I have a quadratic equation something like X square minus fifteen X plus one is equal to zero I can reduce it to X plus one by X format how much will be X plus one by X coefficient of X square is one this minus fifteen shifted to the right hand side it becomes plus fifteen now it is very easy it is very very easy if the question is given in terms of quadratic equation directly like this if it is given in this format of quadratic equation it is very very easy to convert to this particular format but let me actually do some manipulations in the same equation X square minus fifteen X that minus fifteen X I will write it as minus seven X minus eight X that minus eight X I will shift it to the right side and plus one I will write it as it is why did you do all these things some manipulations I am doing there is no rule that fifteen X should be written as seven X plus eight X itself you can write fifteen X as five X plus ten X also right I am just writing like this anything just an example I am saying sir before coming on to problems now if I take the reciprocals on both sides X square minus seven X plus one reciprocal will be one by X square minus seven X plus one this also it will be written as one by eight X right one by eight X now further I will simplify this X on the right hand side I will shift it to the numerator on the left hand side that X will come there and this eight can be written as two into four in that two into four let me shift the two to the left hand side so remaining thing which is there on the right hand side is four right it is four so X square minus seven X plus one that means instead of directly giving you a quadratic equation like this in your question the question can also be given in this particular format also I hope you are understanding sir this can also be the question like this also in this particular format also they can give you the question and if it is given in this particular format you will think that finding out X plus one by X it is slightly little difficult compared to finding when it is given in terms of quadratic equation yes it is a little difficult to find X plus one by X but until you understand how to find it but once you understand it it is once again a second problem sir second problem now see here first thing that you need to observe is coefficient of X square is one now whatever I have done here the reverse way I should go like this and create a quadratic equation but you should not write all the reverse ways of finding it in the examination hall and waste your time you should be so strong in calculating it from your mind itself that means two X multiplied by four is eight X eight X will be there on the denominator on the left hand side numerator will become one here so that means it will reduce to this format next this eight X if I shift it to the left hand side it becomes minus eight X minus seven X is already there it becomes minus fifteen X that means it becomes this particular quadratic equation that means whatever I said you right now everything should be calculated in your mind itself and once you create this quadratic equation X plus one by X is never a difficulty because coefficient is one even if the coefficient of X square is not one also you can just say very fast how to find X plus one by X value now let me take another example sir nothing to worry let me take another example six X square minus twenty eight X plus six is equal to zero if it is directly given like this I know how to find X plus one by X very easily twenty eight minus twenty eight X minus twenty eight shifted to the right hand side it becomes plus twenty eight because the coefficient of X square is six shifted to the right hand side it becomes twenty eight by six but instead of giving you the quadratic equation directly like this suppose if they are giving like six X square minus thirteen X plus six is equal to fifteen X now again reverse it one by six X square I am doing all these things they will not do all these things in the question directly they will give the question in some difficult format this one by fifteen X I will write it as three into five X for example three into five X this five X shifted to the numerator of the left hand side five X divided by six X square minus thirteen X plus six is equal to one by three that means instead of directly giving you the quadratic equation like this assume that they are giving you like this in the question now you think that X plus one by X finding is very difficult but actually it is no you should actually traverse in the reverse direction right now to get this equation but don't write all these steps in the examination and waste your time calculate in your mind five X into three is fifteen X fifteen X shifted it is minus twenty eight X so that means minus twenty eight shifted to the right hand side it becomes plus twenty eight and because the constant is having plus it is X plus one by X because the coefficient of X square is six it is six in the denominator very easy to find it sir I hope I am making sense for each and every student listening to this class why did I discuss these points right now because my next question demands you to learn like that now see here they are not directly giving you the quadratic equation but they are giving you in this particular format but you should be so fast in analyzing two P into three is six P shift this six P to the right and left hand side minus seven P minus six P is minus thirteen P that means because the constant is plus I will be finding P plus one by P minus thirteen shifted to the right hand side it becomes plus thirteen coefficient of P square is five shifted to the right hand side it becomes by five it is very simple sir I am damn sure that it is very easy for you right now if I know P plus one by P value P square plus one by P square is thirteen by five whole square minus one one sixty nine sorry minus two one sixty nine by twenty five minus two one sixty nine by twenty five minus two is hundred and nineteen by twenty five it's a very very easy question trust me take my words you can solve it within five to ten seconds if you know how to directly solve it in your mind itself and create a quadratic equation and express into the form of P plus one by P is equal to thirteen by five just for you to understand this particular steps in the most easiest way I have explained you this screen and the previous screen I hope you are understanding why did I take all these things sir let me not let me not make you confused sir let me take another question for your better understanding which is of probably similar salt now see here slight difference but it's not a difficult question now see here what you need to find in this question is P square plus sixteen by P square that means I can write it as P square plus four by P whole square right P square plus four by P whole square is what I need to find in this question now see here sir this is directly not given in terms of quadratic equation but mind calculation should be done right now four P into four is sixteen P shift the sixteen P to the right hand side left hand side it is minus sixteen P minus four P minus twenty P that means can I say that the equation becomes P square minus twenty P plus four is equal to zero right plus four is equal to zero now think logically in all my equations what I wrote quadratic equations if you want I will show it to you sir I will show it to you if you want to in all the quadratic equations what I gave you and explained whenever the coefficient of X square is one my constant also I took it as one right I took the constant also as one what if the constant is different if you observe coefficient of X square is one constant is also one coefficient of X square is one coefficient of X square is one constant is also one here also constant is one here also constant is one here also constant is one what if the constant is not one that is the kind of equation what we got just now in this particular question observe carefully sir observe carefully coefficient of X square let me go to the screen coefficient of P square is one right now but the constant is not one right now but having said that having said that can I say that it is of the form P plus one by P itself because it is plus why it is plus here because the constant is having plus very simple constant is having plus now this minus twenty shifted to the right hand side it becomes plus twenty but the only difference here is earlier this constant was one because this constant was one I was also multiplying this one by P with one one by P into one is one by P itself but here in this question the constant is four so that means I should multiply this one by P with four one by P into four is it is four by P that's the only difference that means I know the value of P plus four by P as twenty that means P square plus four by P whole square it is nothing but twenty square minus two answer for this question is four hundred minus two which is three ninety-eight but many people will make this mistake and try to search for an answer option as three ninety-eight because three ninety-eight is not there in the option you will suddenly get a doubt you might have done a calculation mistake or if there is an option called as three ninety-eight you will mark it and move ahead but I have taught you another thing it is nothing but K square minus two into A into B where A is coefficient of P coefficient of P is nothing but one multiply by one and B is coefficient of one by P in this question the coefficient of one by P is four don't ever forget to multiply by A into B sir if you forget you are gone why did we not multiply earlier because coefficient of P earlier was one in my previous questions coefficient of one by P also was one multiplying by one will not make any difference so we were not multiplying but in this question you should be very very careful one by P coefficient is not one it is nothing but four answer is four hundred minus eight it is three ninety-two beautiful way beautiful way of understanding the question sir this is exactly how you need to solve the question so that you will solve the questions in the most easiest way for possible and you will make it probably very fast in your examination hall I hope the idea is very question in this particular question of question number thirty-five question number thirty-six question number thirty-six observe carefully sir beautiful question once again this question is one of the very very good questions of SSC examination now see here why this question is one of the beautiful question is the numerator also is a quadratic equation denominator also is a quadratic equation earlier either the numerator was quadratic or the denominator was quadratic one of them was only one quadratic equation was given in few problem before what we solved but in this question both numerator and denominators are quadratic equation now see here sir one of the way of solving it first of all what do I require I require A square plus one by A square value for me to get A square plus one by A square value I need to have A plus one by A value if I know A plus one by A as some constant A square plus one by A square is not at all a difficult task it is K square minus two and in the last part I need to find the square root of it it is never a difficulty sir but first of all how to find A plus one by A now one of the way of solving method one I will not solve method one but I will give you a hint method one is I want A power one plus one by A power one but I have A square numerator divide by A denominator also divide by A that is one of the method of solving right that is one of the method of solving I will not use that method I will move on to my other method which will make your problem solving little easier now observe carefully sir twelve A square minus twenty-seven plus twenty-eight let me write this plus twenty-eight after some time divided by four A square minus nine A plus nine right plus nine now why did I not write this twenty-eight there is a reason I will write it sir nothing to worry right hold on just keep on listening to it I will use a different methodology to solve this in the most easiest way possible what is that methodology is if you observe twelve A square is the denominator sorry four A square is the denominator twelve A square is the numerator four A square if I multiply by three it becomes twelve A square nine A if I multiply by three it becomes twenty-seven A nine if I multiply by three it should become twenty-seven right it should become twenty-seven but the question says it should be twenty-eight another one I will add it as it is that is the reason I did not write it earlier I hope you are understanding right hand side three point two I will write it as it is or I will convert three point two into fraction as sixteen divided by five right or it is thirty-two divided by ten three point two is thirty-two by five thirty-two by thirty thirty-two by ten thirty-two by ten is nothing but sixteen by five now by the if I do it like this the best thing if I do it like this is if you observe carefully this entire thing is nothing but three getting the point right sir this entire thing is nothing but three that means this numerator twelve A square minus twenty-seven A plus twenty-seven if I take three common factor it becomes three into four A square minus nine A plus nine so that will cancel with this denominator only thing you are left with is three plus this entire thing I will write it as it is that means one divided by one divided by four A square minus nine A plus nine right hand side is sixteen by five sixteen by five is the right hand side this plus three also I'll shift it to the right hand side it becomes minus three so that on the left hand side let me cancel it instead of wasting time by writing again and again so right hand side eventually becomes one by five sixteen by five minus three is one by five that means can I say that can I say that what I have right now is one by this equation is equal to one by five if I if I take the reciprocal this becomes four A square minus nine A plus nine is equal to five that five shifted to the left hand side nine minus five is four equal to zero that means I ended up with a beautiful quadratic equation four A square minus nine A plus four equal to zero from here I know how to get A plus one by A value within second minus A minus nine shifted to the right hand side four also shifted to the right hand side I know A plus one by A as nine by four so A square plus one by A square will be nine by four whole square minus two nine by four whole square is eighty-one by sixteen minus two which is nothing but forty-nine by sixteen so A square plus one by A square is forty-nine by sixteen but the question is asking you not to just to find A square plus one by A square they are asking you to find square root of A square plus one by A square this entire thing they want it in square root square root of forty-nine is seven square root of sixteen is four answer for this beautiful question is seven by four if you personally ask me you should not write these steps in the examination looking into the question itself you should make sure that this value is three and the remaining is this thing and this is sixteen by five minus three and you should directly try to get this equation these are all fast calculation these are all mental calculations mental calculations means everything should be mentally done everything should be calculated in your mind itself you should never put your pen on the paper to write all these things in the exam and waste your time sir you should have practiced so much that this should strike in your mind so fast and you should get this equation directly from there you know how to solve it very easily sir once you get the quadratic equation getting the answer is never a difficulty that means whether they give two equations or two quadratic equations or whether they give like the previous questions only one quadratic equation like this it really does not make any difference because we know how beautifully we can get a quadratic equation mentally calculating it and we also know how to get A plus one by A or A minus one by A from that and the moment we get A plus one by A or A minus one by A we also know that it is not at all a difficult task to find A square plus one by A square value I hope I am making sense for each and every student who is listening to this class I hope it is very very clear for you people next question number thirty-seven question number thirty-seven very very beautiful question extremely beautiful question listen to this carefully this is one of the favorite patterns once again for your SSC exam now question says five P plus one by three P is equal to five the whatever they are asking you is nine P square which I can write it as three P whole square plus one by twenty-five P square which I can write it as one by five P whole square this value they are asking now think little logically sir little common sense will give the answer so fast now this is something like this is something like X square plus one by Y square or something like this right one by Y square or whatever it is that means can I say that if I want to get three P square plus one by five P whole square value I will be I will what do you say like this value can be easily got if I have the value of three P plus one by five P that means if I know the value of three P plus one by five P as some constant K three P square plus one by five P square is just equal to K square minus two into A into B where A is the coefficient of P and B is the coefficient of one by P I hope you are getting the value sir I hope you are getting the logic that means I need to have three P plus one by five P value first of all the moment I have three P plus one by five P value finding the answer for the given question is never a difficulty but if you observe the question what I actually require is three P in the numerator five P in the denominator but the question is quite dead opposite five P in the numerator is what they have three P in the denominator is what they have it is quite opposite this denominator three P should become as numerator three P according to my requirement this denominator five P what I had what I actually require should be is actually present in the numerator which should come to the denominator how we like continue further now I will be little smart think logically sir five and three are the two numbers this five should become three if I want that five should become three I will multiply that by three simple simple let us analyze like this if I want that five should become three I will multiply that by three okay let me write the entire thing on the left hand side initially five P plus one by three P I have right now if I want this five to become three I will multiply by three five into three it becomes but I don't want that five to be present I want that five to be cancelled divide it by five simple this is how you should think if you observe right now three by five into five it is nothing but five cancels you are left only with three it becomes three P in the numerator and that is my requirement that is my requirement similarly the second term three by five into one by three P three and three cancels this five P will be there in the denominator that is also my requirement right hand side also multiply by three by five three by five into five it becomes three that means now I have reduced it to a form something like three P plus one by five P is equal to three now it is never a difficulty for me to find three P whole square plus one by five P whole square answer for this question is K square minus two three square minus two but it is not nine in nine minus two seven because I should multiply by the coefficient of P coefficient of P is nothing but three and I should also multiply by coefficient of one by P coefficient of one by P is nothing but one by five so final answer for this question is nine minus six by five it is forty-five minus six thirty-nine by five should be the answer for this question but this will be solved very easily if you try to analyze in the way I taught you exactly right now I hope you are understanding it sir I hope you are understanding it very very clearly just to make your learning much more effective see the next question which is almost similar to the thirty-seventh question see this thirty-eighth question almost similar sixteen K square plus one by sixteen K square I require that means it is nothing but four K whole square plus one by four K whole square this is what they are asking you to find now see here sir given question says eight K minus one by two K it is nothing but six but I don't want eight K I want four K according to my requirement this is how you need to analyze eight K should become four K that means I can say that I will take two common factor or in other language I will divide by two anything is same two common factor means two into four K by sorry minus one divided by if I take two common factor this also will become four K here because two by four is nothing but one by two right hand side is six two into one two into three now it is almost done sir it is very very simple right now four K minus one by four K value I know it as three four K whole square plus one by four K whole square is nothing but K square minus two sorry K square plus two because it is minus here it should be K square plus two three square plus two and if you really want to multiply by the coefficient coefficients of A and B A coefficient is four okay multiply B coefficient is one by four so anyway four into one by four will cancel out final answer is nine plus two answer for this question is eleven I am telling you repeatedly sir these all questions are dead easy provided you make it dead easy by practicing it many times if you do not practice take my words it is of no use entering the examination hall just quit your dream and start dreaming for some other things if you really don't have time to practice all these things but I am very very clearly saying you people you can make it you can achieve your dream provided you practice so many times my only sincere request practice 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 and I believe that the first thirty-eight beautiful extraordinary different varieties of questions what we have solved till now is very clear for every student who is listening to this particular session
you can learn any subject anywhere any place and not the go come let us go the other way in learning download our revolutionary app for free AMC